You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 19th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
It is five thirty-three, it looks like. Calling to order the Michigan City Commission for Women's October 19th meeting. Uh, five thirty-three, let's do a roll call. Um, Albertine Allen.
Here.
Here, she's on the phone. Okay, Belinda. I mean, sorry, I just looked at Belinda.
I am here.
You are here. All right, Lori Wink.
Here.
Okay, Bonnie.
Here.
Here. Okay, Veronica Martin.
Here.
Christina Isabel, here. Fay is absent. Um, who else? Belinda Conley, absent. Angie, or City Council liaison, is absent.
And Sarah.
And Sarah Johnson is absent.
Wow.
Is this Sarah Jones?
It's Sarah Jones. Oh, I tell you guys, it's been a day.
We're gonna blame it on the rain.
Blame it on the rain.
Weather.
We're gonna blame it on the rain.
Can you both her volume, your volume up?
Yeah, that's as far as my volume will go. Is she on speaker? She's on speaker.
Okay.
Okay.
Try it.
Um, so now we are approving the minutes from... We have a quorum, yes, with you on the phone, we are, have a quorum. We have both the August minutes to approve. And September minutes to approve.
I move that we approve the August meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and Albertine says aye, good. And moving on to the September. There's one change.
Well, did you basically use this document?
I did. I know you mentioned something to me, Bonnie, and I don't think I made any changes on it.
Um, men and women?
Yeah.
In the service of the veterans?
Yeah, just that. So, one amendment is under the focus, the goals, to just put mental health needs of men, women, and military veterans.
Okay.
Anyone else, anything else?
All right.
All right, all came through.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we need motion to approve.
Did somebody, yeah, did somebody?
Uh, we approve the, this is September, the September minutes.
The retreat meeting.
Okay, Bonnie.
Of course, the retreat.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then that's approved. And now we have the treasurer's report.
Um, we have had no transactions over the past month, so our balance at the end of September was fifteen thousand, one oh three, one oh four, and our balance as of today is fifteen thousand, one hundred, three dollars and four cents.
Great. Motion to approve the minutes, I mean, the treasurer's remarks. Albertine motions, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Fine, great.
Aye.
And, okay, any opposed? No. All right, term update review. Um, just so you know, just Christina, Bonnie, and Albertine, and Veronica, our terms are up. Christina and Bonnie, we are mayor appointees, we need to write a letter to the mayor. Um, and let them know that most likely this isn't going to happen until the election occurs. So, um, and then Albertine, you just need to find someone from Minority Health to fill your role. Veronica, um, if you want to stay on, you just need to fill out that form.
Okay.
Okay, great. And Lori, your term's not up until twelve twenty-five.
All right.
Okay. Great. And then our next, we're just gonna fly through our agenda here today. Um, we have been, a request to co-partnership with the League of Women Voters to bring an ACLU speaker to Michigan City in 2024. Bonnie, could you talk to us about that?
Yes, there was, there's a woman by the name Caitlin T. that Christina, you and I had met with on Zoom one time earlier this year. Um, and then we started getting update, legislative updates from them about reproductive rights issues here in Indiana. And, um, the League of Women Voters wanted to invite her, see if she could come up here to speak to a group, and we were, what we're hoping is that we can find a student organization at PNW in Westville and have that as co-hosts, and then we could have it at PNW, hopefully get some students to attend it, and the, but we're asking if the Commission for Women would to also cosponsor that. And if the Commission for Women could then, would then be willing to offer to pay mileage, maybe, or something like that, for her.
Is there a date in mind, or we're just working out the partnerships?
Yeah, we're still looking, I had written to her already to ask her if that might be possible in January or February, and, um, I haven't heard back from her yet, but that's the timeframe we were looking at, so.
What is the cost, Bonnie?
Don't know yet what the cost would be, I don't know exactly that they would charge, um, but we might need to offer us stipend for mileage or something like that. And actually, at PNW, if she would speak there, maybe it would be during the day, and maybe she would make a round trip, just in that one day. Um, but that, we can discuss all of that, based in part if the Women's Commission wants to cosponsor it, and...
Could we work through Sheila Rolson, maybe, just at PNW, just to see what's...
Yes, probably.
Play as student organization, or maybe should be a good place to start?
Yeah, yeah. I think that the League had already reached out to Caitlin, just because we already knew her, and I used to talk to her every month to get a, an email or every month to get a legislative update, and, um, so I just continued those emails about this, so, um, but if it goes any farther, we, you know, next step, we would have to decide who exactly to, um, would be involved or be invited.
Are we accepting a proposal right now, then?
It's, um, at this point, I was just asking if the Women's Commission would be interested in cosponsoring the, the, um, speaker, and, um, and then do planning from there, after that point, but if the Commission doesn't...
I'd be interested in what it's gonna cost before we say yay.
It potentially might not cost us anything.
Yeah.
And, which is interesting, I think, I, I like the relationship that we've built with the ACLU over the last year. And I think it's, it's good to continue that flow of information, so that we can inform people here in Michigan City about what's going on.
To be focused on reproductive rights.
Yes. But I'll be off of the Commission in December, so I won't have any, you know, real, exact connection to you, although Lori is the representative from the Women Voters, so...
Take the bow and run with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like a great idea.
There's something else coming up in February, and I got it, I was supposed to call the guy back today, and it's on Black History and something else, but I'm...
Ooh, that is Black History Month.
Then Minority Health is having their annual event that we could not have in October, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
You're waiting for January.
There's a lot of stuff going on in February.
Yeah, there would be.
So that might, so it might be the focus is a January focus for that.
Unless we do it for the Women's Equality Luncheon.
Unless we did it in March.
That's in March, yeah.
Um...
Okay, the weather should be better by March.
Because we really don't have anything in place for that event, right?
Yeah.
Yet.
No, the, and the, um, Women's Day event, though, in the National Women's Day theme is inspire inclusion.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure reproductive health would be the right thing for that conversation. Um, but...
Yeah, I agree.
I like the idea of partnering with multiple organizations, and that the, the crowd could be more a variative age group, and also just the, the amount of people that we might be able to hit with the information seems valuable.
Right.
So, I don't know what we need to vote on.
Welcome, Belinda.
Hi, Belinda.
Thank you, hi, everyone.
So, do we need to vote on anything at this time, or should we just, it's something that we're interested in, we want to explore more?
Yeah, that's really, you know, if you don't say today that no, you definitely won't be involved in this because of the subject or whatever, you know, then I would, of course, go back to the League.
I think Albertine just said we don't wanna say no, didn't she?
Yeah, she said no, yeah, I mean, she said yes.
Yes, she didn't wanna say no.
Well, then, we can do it anyway. This is what I wanna be able to say, is if I can tell the ACLU speaker that the Michigan City Commission for Women, you know, will, is considering being a cosponsor of this.
Let's make that a motion, then.
Yeah, I think so.
Then...
Bonnie made an emotion.
She should make it a motion.
Bonnie made an emotion. Okay. Albertine seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, then we'll look at that.
Thank you.
And then, I just need, I completely, um, I received Belle's application, I did send that to you guys, let's go ahead and move, can, is it okay to move this up to that, add it to our agenda at this point, so we don't have to...
Where is it on the agenda?
It is not on the agenda.
Oh, and what is the agenda?
I have sent the agenda out.
What is the agenda?
This will be an application request for donation.
Read the request.
So Belinda is here, um, today.
What is Belinda's last name?
Lee.
Lee, L-E-E? Okay, thank you.
Do you wanna, Belinda, would you like to go ahead and tell us about your application?
First of all, thank you all for your time today, it's good to see you all. I thought I had a copy of it.
Over here, I can read what you have.
Sure, or do you want, go ahead. So, my name is Belinda, everyone calls me Belle, so I am Bellee, and I was a member of this commission, and during that time, I recall that we all, we were very concerned about the...
Can she speak up a little bit, Christina?
Can you speak up, just 'cause she's on the phone?
Okay.
Maybe you could come up closer to the phone, just an idea, so that Albertine can... Come on up. That's great.
My name is Belinda Lee, everyone calls me Belle, so I am Bellee. One of the issues that continues to be at the forefront is infant and maternal mortality rates in LaPorte County. And one of the things across the world that has been noted scientifically based is that doulas play an important role in curbing those numbers. Because of this commission and the position that they took to, to address these issues head-on, it was important for me to go and get trained and become a member of Dona International as a trained doula. My request to this, to this commission is to provide one thousand dollars to me for funding, so I can educate the community about the important resources, um, that are available during birthing. It is, birthing is one of the most traumatic experiences that happens to the female body, and oftentimes, people are experiencing this alone, as dealing with trauma. Doulas play an integral part, not medical, but compassionate caregiving, along with comfort aids. And so, I'm here to say that I'm a proud birthing doula, and I'm excited about my journey to help curb infant maternal mortality.
Um, cool, and so you're requesting a thousand dollars for training materials, supplies, educational events to community, and explain, so do you have any programs coming up?
So, as part of the certification program through Dona International, which is the leading trainer for doulas internationally, requires me to do internship in order to become certified. And part of that internship requires, except, trainings, books, and to be present for births before I can get my certification, it's like after you become a nurse, you have to do your time on the floor, you fill out your paperwork packet and submit for, and so that is the process. And I also have reached out to some community agencies in this town to, for partnerships, so people can understand what doulas do, and how we can be used in that birthing process.
Doulas sense that most people don't know that.
I do believe that most people don't know, so doula is a Greek word that means slave, it's a servant to those who are given birth. I was, I struggled with that at first, but that's what we are, we are here to serve the people who need it the most.
It's kind of like a midwife.
Yes, but there is no medical training, however, I do have medical training in other areas, but I cannot, the role of the doula, doesn't matter what your hat is when you came in, when you enter the room, and you enter that family's life, you are there for comfort, for mental health, and physical health and comfort.
Now, would you be partnership with St. Anthony's?
So that's actually where I received my certification training from, Franciscan, uh, Franciscan in, um, Crown Point has a program.
I thought they had a program here in Michigan City also.
I cannot speak on that.
So you got your training through Franciscan, is that what you're saying? Is that what you asked me to do?
And that doula starts with doing the pregnancy period and on through the child's first year of life. That program has been going for, I would say, four years, maybe, I know it started before the pandemic, and we have serviced, I, I can't even tell you the number of women, but we serve LaPorte, St. Joe, and Elkhart County.
Could you repeat that there is an organization that's doing that?
Minority Health has a doula in the last four years, and has been...
Has trained doulas?
Does not train doulas, but has a doula and has, um, been involved in numerous person, people's process and birthing experience.
It's a very good program, really a good program, but we do have a doula here, and then that doula is servicing LaPorte, Elkhart, and part of St. Joe County, and she's bilingual, so we, we get the Hispanic population, Jewish population, because she is Jewish, and then we do have, I can't think of the, I was thinking she does burpees, but, yeah, her name is Susan Yen Marado.
Yeah, Susan Yen Marado, she spoke at our...
The last four years.
Um, yes, and on top of that, we also know that the Salvation Army's, or, I'm sorry, through Goodwill, the family, um, happy babies, healthy families, has doulas as well. So actually, in Michigan City, we do have, um, maybe three or four doulas. Um, have you reached out to either of those programs to get involved with them?
I have reached out to some, and I like to not name their names, I don't, at this time, I'd be glad to submit that information privately. So, I'm not negating the fact that there are doulas in this city, there are some wonderful people doing some wonderful things, right? I'd like to be one of those people doing those wonderful things, this is my hometown, this is my village.
So you're just requesting a thousand dollars for you to do your, to do that?
Yes, and community education on what doulas do. Most people have never heard of a doula, they've heard of midwives, they've heard of midwives, they've not heard, and people that have doulas, the cost of doula is almost out of reach for the people who need it, the black and brown communities, unless doulas are giving you appropriated rate and free, they're out of reach, and people are unaware that you can use your health savings plan, and your, you can use all monies according to the IRS, how you can use your health savings plan in your savings account, to use doulas for your birth. And also in Indiana, Walmart Corporation also includes, it's part of their healthy family plan, that you can have a doula and pay up to a thousand dollars. The difficulty is, is that if people are not private paying for these services, there's no insurance coverage currently for them.
Indiana does provide funding for doulas.
There, there is, um, most, ninety percent of the doulas service people of lower income, they still have the finances to do all the other stuff, and so there is, um, a population here in Michigan City that we service that are low-income families, and they are well aware of what the doula does, and they make great use of it.
Thank you so much.
And it's, it's a darn good program, and maybe we should have had it sooner than later here in Michigan, but Franciscan Sisters in, they are, didn't start the program until I was pregnant, right?
Question.
And I'm gonna say emails negative about Franciscan Sisters, but that's an issue.
So, Albertine is just saying that, that it's Franciscan Sisters, and we've been, Michigan City has been supporting doulas in our area for a little while, so, so what Belle is, is approaching is something that we are, you know, the community is looking to expand and grow.
I think it's a good idea, and I'm glad that she wants to do that, but the doula's program starts during birth, I mean, before the mom is pregnant, it starts when she finds out that she's expecting, and then the doula starts.
Yes, so it sounds as if Belle is looking to, uh, just the thousand dollars to help her continue to expand her experience in that field, I think.
I don't know, do you have a nursing skills? Almost like a nursing program, that you would donate or help people with, so he would be looking at Michigan City, correct?
I didn't hear the question, I'm receding.
I'm, I'm waiting for Bonnie, actually, I didn't hear it.
Um, I wondered if you have, like, an itemized list of what the thousand dollars would be spent on, some of the things.
Certainly, I'll get some in.
You won't submit that? No, we don't have an itemized list. Okay.
I still don't quite understand, I don't, I don't know if you explained it, Belle, I'm sorry if you did, that, what's the difference between a midwife and a doula?
A doula provides no medical care.
So is it just like a support?
A midwife is there to do, to, at birth, she does the, she's not treating or taking...
But I can deliver a child.
And all of that stuff, that, that's, a midwife is there on birth.
And what, what is the role of the doula, then, would somebody have a doula and a midwife?
Yes, yes.
From the time the pregnancy starts?
Till, till the child is a year old.
Till the child is a year old, did you say, Albertine?
Till the child is a year old, then he's...
Kind of like a coach.
And is that for problematic pregnancies?
No.
No, that's for anyone that wishes to have a doula, that wants someone to be with them, you have a lot of, a lot of ladies that are not getting the proper care from a pediatrician or a gynecologist, or whatever you wanna call it, and so they can opt to have a doula, and the doula will go with them on their visits and ask questions that they normally don't get to ask.
Okay.
You know, how you, they run you in and they run you out, but the doula is there to support that mom and father, if he's, if he's there, through the pregnancy of the child.
Okay, thanks for explaining that.
Kind of like a, so, from, from, from the very, from the very beginning, um, finding out, um, and just walking, finding resources, finding extra, um, things that, you know, they, that the mom or the parents would not know otherwise, and walking them step by step through the entire key of, from the beginning of pregnancy through the first year of that baby.
Yeah, wow.
So, kinda like a coach, sorta?
There are different types of doulas, I am a birthing doula.
Yeah, I heard there's a death doula, too.
So, it doesn't go through year one with a birthing doula, a postpartum doula does postpartum care, up until, almost sometimes, up until two years old, that's a preference, and it's called a birthing plan, and it's a contract that the doula has with the family for their needs.
Do you have to have personal insurance in case something happens, and...
Yes.
Yeah, I figured that would be the case, yeah.
So it looks as if you just did the training.
I think Albertine's saying something.
They don't work specifically for minority health partners, but they are of Indiana, and, um, they're on staff and they're on payroll, so they do have insurance.
Yes, she's saying that the doulas that work through Minority Health are insured. So, Belinda, it looks like you just finished this, October 7th and 8th, and 14th and 15th was this workshop, so you're kind of in the beginning of your process.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, okay.
So you're help, so basically, you're, you're needing help with like a practicum or internship part, is what?
Where would you, where would you do that at, or who would you be under when you're doing that practicum?
I'm under Duna, Dona International, as a member.
Nothing local, no one local.
Franciscan, so...
She, she just finished the certificate of attendance of a birthing program through Franciscan Health Crown Point. When's this last weekend?
So I'll explain the business end, so the business end is just like anyone who's starting a business, you, you, you cultivate your own clientele. But my goal is to educate...
And we remind you guys that we did say we were not gonna give out any more money until we had a fundraiser.
Albertine was stating that we did, that discussed that we weren't planning on giving money until we, as the following year, so...
Well, I thank you all for your time.
I think it would be a good, um, support for her, but I don't know if they're gonna wait till afterward, 'cause you're gonna, you wanna get started right away, correct?
This application is on file until you all make a decision about it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, we thank you for coming in and sharing your application, and we'll, we'll discuss it.
Because what you sound like you wanna do is put more in the press, so people could know that they...
Yeah.
Well, how do people know what...
I want to do community events.
Okay, well, that's what I guess, what kind of, like, you know, people will know, because, as you were just saying, people really don't know about the doula, so, I didn't know about them, I mean, I know what one is, but I didn't know that we had them in Michigan City until we had our, our workshop and our event in March, and that was good to know that we do have them. So, like, how would, because you gotta, how would people know what they wanna do, or as a midwife, or go to the hospital, or whatever?
So that's what's called a birthing plan. So, unfortunately, most people, unless you're planning a pregnancy, you don't know you're pregnant until you've missed your cycle, and unfortunately, um, that's pretty late, maybe the term already, and we know that good prenatal health, good diet, good water, good clean air, stable housing, confident peace, bring along a better pregnancy and a better birth. Those are numbers that we all know, we, we all know that. And if we don't, they're available in the Health Department's records, the Indiana Department of Health, um, and I'd be glad to share those numbers, because they're pitiful for the black community, they're pitiful. Black and brown people are dying at three times that of white women. Black and brown people, even if they're educated on the upper echelon and make more than a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, they are losing their children and dying after birth at a higher rate than uneducated rural white women.
There are plenty of news stories about that, I think we've all heard a lot of that.
Yeah, we know, we've been dealing with that for a year.
There are disparities in our community.
Two years.
And I want to address those disparities. And while it's very rare.
It's feeling like a little heated.
No, ma'am, I am passionate and I'm just trying to share some words. And I'm terribly sorry that my passion has come across to you as heated. Please forgive me, ma'am. I mean, no disrespect.
Okay. Um, okay. I think we have enough information at this point and we'll be able to get back to you um, later on, on the, your donation request.
Thank you so much.
All right. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay, moving on. Um, we will discuss that at the end. November, um, our speaker will be Shante Woodwooford of the Girl Coalition of Indiana. And she's going to review reporting on the twenty twenty-three Indiana Girl Report, which has got a lot of really interesting information and I think it would be great to hear that. So just letting us know. Um, just wanted to update that March eighth is the International Women's Day and the theme is inspire inclusion. Um, I have spoken with Nokia and can still utilize that, um, funding that we have already put in for, for, for catering for a hundred people. So we can, uh, potentially start setting up that event. What might be wise is to just get a subcommittee to just start talking about that because as we know, time moves fast. I know we're not all here, um, but would anybody be willing to be on a subcommittee to help steer and organize and bring it back to the group what our possibilities are?
You know, I can't volunteer because I'll be through in December.
That is correct.
I'll volunteer.
All right.
You know.
Lori.
I'll work with you, Lori.
Great.
Great, thanks, Linda.
Good. I have a feeling Faye will want to be involved too, but I'm not going to say that. So right now, that's who we got.
And Faye is not ending her term. She's still with us?
Yeah, she's 25.
All right.
Good. Moving on, our, uh, an idea for, why don't you go ahead and talk about the next category, which is a future guest speaker. We're thinking of, uh, Liliana Franco, who is the Operations Director of the Economic Development Corps.
Yeah, I was thinking of her in terms of if we, and I don't know that we've decided that yet, but if we have the theme of business women entrepreneurs, she's very much a part of that. And, uh, I don't, I think she's new in her role and actually, I can't remember. I read about her. She works with Clarence Halls. I think she was actually born in Cuba or something?
Yes, she is.
Or Puerto Rico or somewhere.
I think Puerto Rico is where she's from and she just.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good night.
You know who you could talk to also if, uh, is that Black Women's Business Association or is it just Female Business Association? I never did understand which that was.
And it's the Black Women's?
Is it Black Women's, uh, Business Association? Is that what they are?
No, um, it's the Michigan City Black Business Association, just Black Business Association.
Just Black Business, okay. I think, I think we should have both of them come and talk with us sometime or another to see how they got started, what you really need to do.
Well, what's interesting is I do think both Denise Schick does have a project uh, working on something, do you know that's getting more?
I don't know what it is, but she has said that she would pick me up sometime next month, I think it is, to go to something since I can't drive.
Okay. Yeah, I think she's working on a mentoring program, um, right now. And then the Economic Development Corporation is also working on an innovation hub. And so that's kind of, you know.
I think you would have a lot of good information on what is happening, you know, citywide.
And I, I think it would be good for all of us to know what's going on in the city because there's about to be a lot of changes with the Michigan, the vibrant Michigan City. Just if we are all kind of conscious and aware and we start reaching into these, you know, what's, what's the next development? So I just want to really suggest highly that we get her as a future guest speaker.
Good. Can I, can I, can I speak to the request for funds?
Yes.
Yes. We have a.
Um, requesting for funds to be, to do something or whatever. When Veronica requested funds, we knew where the money was going. It's going to the Michigan City, Westways or whatever it was. Anyway, we didn't have a problem with that. I, what I have a problem with is writing a check to, a personal check to the person that's going to go take the training and, and we need, that's not a safe thing to do.
Did everyone hear that?
I don't, I don't know if I'm saying it right or not, but.
Summarize it. I could hear it, but I don't think you guys could hear it over there.
You want to summarize what she said? Okay. Basically, she's saying that, um, she's not, does not believe we should fund an individual that doesn't have a clear plan for where that money will be.
Like Veronica who had a case to make and.
You know, your daughter needed something, we gave you money. You know, we knew that the car, you know, the historic woman was doing her, um, she needed money to go somewhere, you need money to do something or even the Michigan City Moves. We had a project that we needed funds to feed the kids, right? So it's hard to, we've never given an individual money for, um, when, for an unclear idea.
I, I agree. However, I also think that in this particular case, that those conversations should be, should not be said while the person is presenting. And this, that, that should have been a discussion after because, because then right after that, I'm just a therapist in me. A shift was in the atmosphere. So meaning things started becoming more uncomfortable. Okay, so.
Repeat that to me, Christina.
Things were more uncomfortable because we started talking about, we said we wasn't going to get, give any more money. Then if he said that, we should have never invited another person to present.
Well, I did not invite her, actually. She just sent the application in and I gave it to you. I wasn't even sure that we were going to have it done tonight.
Oh, so she just showed up?
Yes, yes.
Oh, she wasn't invited then?
No, I did not say come and speak.
Oh, okay.
She sent it to me yesterday or, you know, and then I sent it out to you guys, not saying that, well, not getting it on the floor. It wasn't on the agenda. I didn't put it on the agenda. So she just showed up.
So she can just show up, yeah.
And even, even so, I, I just believe that we as a collective should, should be more gender, gingerly in handling, handling that, you know, just, just do what we did, hear her out. And then after, afterwards, then go and talk about, well, we said we weren't going to.
Yeah, so that's always been our, our.
But it didn't happen.
It didn't?
No.
I thought it was important to ask questions.
No, that happened. But also Albertine said while she was sitting right there.
No, she's never there.
Oh, yeah, she's sitting there. She says.
She was going to leave prior to any more conversation, so.
Still, that should have happened after she left, like what we're doing now.
I see what you're saying.
And because then what happened, she started getting her feelings. Because, um, what was said was, but we said we weren't going to give out any more money. And so now she'd have made her presentation and we sit there right in the midst, so we.
It's kind of in an awkward position for us that we shouldn't really probably.
She's in an awkward position and that's what she does. And it's not up to us to.
But we're still, we're still an example and we still have to act and operate in a certain way. We still have to hold integ- integrity and say things appropriately, correctly. And that was not, that part of the conversation was not, regardless of what she does, we still have to do something. We, we can hear her and say, we will get back to you and then proceed on.
Well, that's what we did. We had one person have a comment, which that happens in how many meetings?
That's changed.
But that didn't change. She, she got up to move earlier than that. She had already made her decision and was about to leave prior, way prior to that when we asked her a lot more questions. So I don't think we can put that on all of us of, of reaction.
Just if we could just, as I like.
As treasurer, I thought I should actually ask her if she can give us a list, you know?
And that was, that was, that was, that was.
That was reasonable, sure. We didn't have a written proposal.
And if she does that in the coming month, maybe at the next meeting, we'll be able to discuss it, put her on the agenda and invite her here and we'll have that information in front of us so we can.
I'd like to see what she's doing to be, because she's going to Franciscan in, what is it, Crown Point?
Yeah.
Or wherever she's going.
The only thing that she has done is she has completed a, um, thirty-four hour, hold on, sorry, this thing's coming up on my screen.
A training.
She has done a thirty-four hour workshop.
Yeah.
So it's hard to know when, what would be next because there's a lot of other things that you would need to do. This is a two steps towards certification. It's not even, yeah, there's just a lot more that she would need to do to be a doula.
And, and I understand, like, when my daughter was on the female wrestling, on the wrestling team, that was a clear cut, we need money for the uniform, okay? When the young lady came for the, oh my gosh, she came from PNC. She was doing the research on.
Yes, the race car driver.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that was a clear cut, I mean, um, and very, you know, other things. We got a very clear, and this wasn't as clear. So I.
Maybe when she presented her proposal and itemized and step by step, then we'll get a clear.
Yeah, that's what we need.
What we were doing.
We just need to know what money is spent on.
Yes.
You know, when, when we had the women come in for the safe room for the kids, we didn't fully fund her because she got, you know, there was documented of what she was going to spend the money on. So therefore we could go, okay, we know it's going to be spent on this.
Right.
Based on the conversation that we're having, I just think we're not inclined to do it.
We do not, and I meant, I should have read our guidelines.
So I don't know that we want to encourage her to further pursue it, do we, with us?
But if she has a clear picture, she can say that she's, uh, signed up to, um, participate in, you know, these two community events and she needs three hundred dollars for print materials to distribute and she needs two hundred dollars for this.
Yeah.
You know, if, if we got all of that information from her, then we might be much more inclined, you know? And then it might be something we would certainly consider.
And I, what we fund, this is our request for funding guidelines, which I should have read, which I read prior to every other presentation so that everybody knows, is the commission can use its funds to pay for the following purposes. Material supplies, education to the public, including promotional education, training supplies, community events, special projects, sponsorship for special programs. The commission may at its discretion choose to fund special projects at a higher amount. The commission is not obligated to fund all applications.
So where would this fall within the list of?
If she was, I believe, this is my thought. If, if she came to us and said, I'm going to do a community event on blah, blah, blah date and I need a thousand dollars for printing materials, my, you know, then we could possibly say, yes, or we would fund three hundred dollars just for your materials. But to come in with no, like, clear project in mind seems difficult for us to do. And that we don't actually, I mean, we fund individuals, but usually they're around, um, education programs or, you know, research projects.
Yeah. Well, the fact that she showed up uninvited, I don't, as a commissioner, appreciate that approach. Um, we are systematic in our approach to things. You know, we are reasonable, but I don't think showing up uninvited with no proposal in hand was the appropriate thing to do. Therefore, I'm already inclined to say, if that's the way it's going to be then, and I think there's a history here from what I.
Yes.
So, I mean, and her history with this organization is not good. Um, so coming in here and suddenly wanting to work with the organization, quite frankly, seems a little bit inappropriate. That's my opinion.
It is true that, um, we were left in difficult situations, um, with, with her in the fut- in the past. Yes, that is true. We were all here.
I wasn't, but I, you know.
You know, that, I mean.
I think that's relevant.
I think it's relevant, I think it is too.
So, so maybe on our, on our side or something, maybe we should say something like, if you have, I don't know exactly what it says, so pardon me. Maybe we can have something to say that we must, you must be, um, invited or approved prior to coming. Because I don't know if it says that, anything says that.
Usually I contact the person.
Yeah, it says that you would contact them.
I contact them.
It does say.
Once you apply, you will receive an email that we received your app and, and allows you to.
Took this from a library email.
Okay.
So I didn't reply to the library email.
Okay, the library email?
Yeah, it was, it was a scan to a library.
You know something, Christina, we can go around the world all evening, but Belle knows the rules. She was a commissioner. She knows, she knows what to do. She's been there when people came and made her presentation.
She was just talking to us.
And then we asked them to leave and we would let them know later.
Yeah.
Let's, should we, um?
It's, it's not new to her.
No.
No. Do we need to make a motion to, or at this point? Or is it just that I need to reach out and tell her that we're not? I mean, I don't.
I don't think it was officially on the agenda. I don't think we need to take a motion on something that wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
But I, I would be in favor of you contacting her and saying that we discussed.
Great.
The thing, and I mean, Albertine was right that we weren't going to give out any more money, right? And so we really got a handle on.
Did we recall that?
I know, I do know, we, remember that we did talk about that?
We talked about it, we didn't put a limit. We didn't say we were stopping it.
Yeah.
But we said that we needed to, you know, that there's, could be a fundraising year that we're getting to that ten, you know, we're at fifteen and ten is our base.
We've given out six thousand and we had decided last April, I think, when we were getting requests of like four thousand a month. We got four thousand in requests that month.
Yeah.
And then that's when we decided, okay, let's, uh, cool it here before all of a sudden we're out of money and let's, uh, limit it to, we're going to stick with, you know, having ten thousand left by the, you know?
Yes.
And we won't give out more than that. We'll still have that. That's the only thing.
Albertine, what are you saying?
Part, the, for my telephone?
Oh, you're breaking up a lot this time.
And I told her that right now we weren't giving out any funds because our money was getting low. And we needed to have a fundraiser first. That's what we had talked about that.
So you had already talked to her, Albertine?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I told her we weren't going to give minority health any money because we were.
So apparently Albertine had already talked to her.
That explains why she said.
She, she didn't get, get the answer she wanted at this point.
So, okay. So we should, um, so we're okay there.
We can just, we can.
I will, I will reach out to her and let her know.
What did Albertine say?
What did you say, Albertine?
I said, we can say what we said to keep to this word, but right now we're not funding. We were going to have to have a fundraiser before we start giving out monies again. And then maybe she would have all of her stuff together that she can present when she's invited to come and present.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what we'll, we'll say.
And we would have to give her a thousand.
There are new programs here.
They could, they're not a big deal, especially.
But we can just, like, if you came in and said, I need, I need a thousand dollars because I want to do this, we wouldn't give you a thousand dollars. Just because you wanted to do something, right? It has to, we need to kind of.
No, I mean, the amount, you know, she.
Oh, yeah, right, 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 yeah, yeah.
We don't have to, because if we need you three hundred or five or something, that needs you.
And she would make a case for the amount that she was asking, so.
So we'll let her know and maybe she'll come back. Um, so that'll be up to you guys. Any, I just want to say we, or down to our wire, but, um, the NAACP, since Faye is not here, I just want to share. I'll mail it, mail this all to you. Shoot, I'm so sorry, guys. Had it up and then.
Is that the state, you're talking about the state convention?
Is she asking for, for, uh, some? They're asking, is she asking for, for uh, sending for their book for pages, like a hundred and half is fifty or something like that? I just, I got the email.
Um, I don't know.
Who's talking?
If they're having the national NAACP here and it's gonna be.
I'm sorry, I can't find where this is pulling up on my computer right now. I don't know where it is. Oh, yeah. Louise, I have too many tabs open, apparently. Okay. Oh, here we go. That's why I was on that. So there, um, that NAACP has their state conference convention here at PNW, November second through the fifth.
Yeah.
And I will go ahead and email you guys their entire schedule, but it looks like really some really interesting programs. But they also have the Indiana State Conference School Food Dinner on Friday, November third from four thirty to six thirty at Saint John's United Church of Christ. And it's twenty-five dollars per ticket. And I will go ahead and email you guys that and we'll post it on our, our website. The other thing we wanna say is for the Michigan City Black Business Association.
Yes.
Is, okay. Thank you, thank you, sorry. And then I have to run out. Yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay.
So Michigan City Black Business Association, they're doing, um, they're making little bags together of hygiene products, sanitary napkins and things like that.
Oh, yeah.
For.
Ernest is gonna have to talk up.
Okay, we are making um, little like.
Diddy bags. What'd you call them? Diddy bags.
She called them ditty bags, little, little bags with hygiene products such as sanitary napkins or deodorant, toothbrush, toothpaste, things like that for the students. So, and we wanna have them in so many different schools.
Great.
And so we need donations for the products. So if we can, I'm asking with the Women's Commission if you would like to, if you could donate some products, sanitary products, hygiene products to put in these bags. We need the product, we need everything by January. So that gives us time to um, work on it. And we can take it to the, I'm sorry. Um, and actually Denise Ship, she said, um, I asked her, I got your message uh, earlier, uh, I just couldn't get back to you.
That's fine.
She said anytime we get it together, with, so we would like it by January, but anytime we get it together, we can, we can drop it off to her. So.
Drop it to Denise.
She's coordinating it.
Yes.
Veronica, this is Michigan City.
Black Business.
Black Business Association.
Yes. Yeah, we're talking about the Michigan City Black Business Association is doing uh, female um, ditty bags. They're requesting.
Goody bags.
Diddy.
Yeah, we find the NAACP.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll mail that, mail that.
Some high school or middle school too?
High school, middle school. She wants to get in the different schools in the areas.
By January what?
She didn't say. She didn't say.
Okay.
Um, I know right now they're focusing on making sure we, we can, we have a successful um, Kwanzaa that's coming up. That's our, then after that, it will be focusing on the, the bags. So
Okay.
Um, we have them all turned in by January. Kwanzaa will be ending and then we can start, yeah.
Maybe we can put out a little like blurb on Facebook, we're collecting, so, donations and have people drop them off at City Hall. That'd be so cool. And then we'll collect, uh, the Black Business Association.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be really cool though. That'd be really cool, so.
Okay.
We're gonna be in trouble for that.
Can we, will we get in, will we get in trouble?
Yeah, they don't have any place.
To drop it off?
To drop it off, for me. Cause we, cause we don't have an office or even a mailbox.
Ah, yeah. All right.
Oh, they, okay, happy.
Yeah.
We're doing that at our church too, so.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So if we can do that, um, I got like.
Where can we drop them off for Denise, to Denise?
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna say the Emmett Y, at least the Emmett Y is, that's where we.
Oh, Emmett Y, okay.
That's where you guys meet?
Yeah, so I'm gonna say the Emmett Y is um, neighborhood center seventeen oh two.
It's in the part of Grace and uh, Frank and Michigan Boulevard.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
That's the Y's center?
Yes.
Okay.
And just so you all also know, um, she sent this to me and I didn't get a chance to print it out. Uh, but I can send it to you and you can send it to everybody at how.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Um, there's a Halloween Boo on the Boulevard cleanup trunk party. So I'm gonna read what it is. It's Boo on the Boulevard. Local business owners will supply Halloween decorated trash cans for fall cleanup around the businesses. The cost, the cost is a large quantity of candy for the participating young people for a trunk or treat party after the cleanup. Groups of children will be on both sides of Michigan Boulevard escorted by parents or volunteers to safely do the community cleanup. And this will be Sunday, October twenty-ninth, three P M until four P M. Trunk or treat will follow immediately after from four to six. And so there, I mean, I know you can't see it, but. Pardon me?
Who's the sponsor there?
Um.
It's the Black Business.
Yep, the Black Business Association, yes. And, and it's the Emmett Y Center and there's a, the information is on here. So what I can do is I can forward it to Christina and Christina can forward it to everybody, right? Okay? Pardon me?
I said, that's a good thing.
Yes, and so.
Is this the first time you've done it?
I think so.
I don't know, but I definitely did it two years in a row.
Two years in a row?
Okay. Okay. I, I don't have, I, I can't.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I gotta go. I got like three minutes to get down the street.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Well, we need to contact Denise if they're gonna drop it off at the Emmett Y's, these um, personal hygiene items. Then we need to have a, is there gonna be a box marked for the donations or, you know, to make sure that people put it in right? They have to have those toys for tote boxes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe they're gonna have a box. We need to find out.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll find out some more information about that, but I think we should all participate in that.
Sure.
Okay, any other comments? All right, um, only just to say that, um, we got two more months.
Two more months.
So, um, keep it fun and, 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 and good. So, um, our next meeting date is November sixteenth.
Uh, I have to miss that one.
Okay. Oh, no.
Is your birthday, you say?
No, no, I'm returning from vacation that day.
Oh.
Okay, so.
Well, it's gonna be, Denise, it's gonna be.
We will adjourn our meeting now at um, six thirty.
To six thirty?
Oh, great, that's good.
All right.
Oh, I didn't, no.
So moved.
So, okay, yes, we've made a motion, move by Lori, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Gosh, I'm so glad we had a. All right, thank you so much. All right, Albertine, thank.